Good afternoon, Mayor One. I would like to welcome everyone to the Board of Commissioners' Budget Meeting. The approval. I need to make the adjustment about the special call.
You can do the approval of the agenda and then right before you go into anything else, you can do a call for the meeting on the 28th.
Okay. First, we need approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
We have a motion in the second discussion. All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Before, we need to have a special call meeting on May 28th at 6:00 PM for the purpose of personnel. Need a motion.
Make a motion to approve for the meeting of May 28th at 6:00 PM.
We have a motion. Is it second? Discussion? All in favor? Motion passed. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Son moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Motion passed. Thank you. Next is budget presentation.
Mayor and Commissioners, good evening. And staff, good evening. Over the past three weeks, starting on May 5th, we have had numerous work sessions to present budget requests to each one of you by our departments. I will have a finance director and an interim clerk give you information that I will be pulling out from tonight. So first off, I want to say thank you very much for listening to our presentations and considering our requests. But I also especially want to thank our staff, our directors and their teams who have worked diligently with me, especially over the past four weeks, to develop a sound process and contribute to the budget that I'll be presenting to you today. Normally, while managers like to refer to this as a manager's recommended budget, I want to emphasize that this really is a team-driven budget. We've got some really good staff working at the town of Zebulon, and I appreciate those who returned recently to assist us within the past couple of weeks to get to where we are today. So thank you, staff. Today, of course, is the first opportunity to review the total budget requests together. And so Mayor and Commissioners, in according with the general statutes of North Carolina and on behalf of our team, it's my honor and privilege to present, submit to you, a recommended budget for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. This budget is balanced, and it was prepared in accordance with the provisions of North Carolina Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act and the policies of the North Carolina Local Government Commission. It incorporates the priorities and policy direction communicated by you in your 2030 strategic plan, which was adopted back in 2018-2019 fiscal year, and incorporates recent feedback that we received from our residents. This budget also reflects our commitment to responsible fiscal management. I shared with one of you this afternoon, this is probably the most fiscally conservative board that I've had the privilege to work with, and I appreciate the opportunity to let us do that with you. While we continue to provide services that improve the quality of life for the residents of Zebulon and our more than 100 dedicated employees. So, this is the outline that I will be walking through today, and I will have tabs that will introduce us to each subject. So just keep this in mind. So, basically, the statutes for Local Government Fiscal and Budget and Fiscal Control Act, General Statute 159, asks us to submit budget requests and revenue estimates before April 30. We've complied with that. None later than June 1st to submit budget and budget message. We're doing that today. And before adopting the budget ordinance, we hold a public hearing, which we're doing on June 2nd, and then to adopt a budget no later than July 1st. We're also going to do that. The next slide shows you the schedule that we are operating from. Starting April 28th, we conducted surveys with residents to receive their input on the budget. We had about 4,400 residents that we reached on Facebook and roughly about 8,300 responses. In addition to this survey, we have had two open houses, including one that we had tonight, and we have a budget hearing on June 2nd, and of course, your retreat on June 7th. Afterwards, between June 9th and June 30th, we anticipate budget adoption, because your fiscal year, new fiscal year starts July 1st of 2025. But I believe that budget is more than connecting just numbers, right? Budget is really about connecting the dots. I like to think that budget is really more about telling stories than just throwing numbers out. So I'd like to be able to spend the next several slides talking about what we've done well in 2025, 2026, together. But I will also talk about our challenges that remain and the fact that we have opportunities for improvement as a town. So for ease of understanding, what I have done is to group all of these accomplishments in five areas, starting with public safety, then infrastructure, amenities, economic development slash planning, and staffing. I believe that four of these really speak to the quality of life of our residents, and one of these, that is staffing, really speaks to those who help make that happen in partnership with our board and commissioners. So starting with public safety, I believe we accomplished a lot in 2024-25. I like to reference our support for Western North Carolina, which is support we were able to provide assistance to deployments in the aftermath of Hurricane Helen, to communities in Western North Carolina. So we had our police department and fire department deploy supervisors and officers to the region to provide support and assistance. We also amended the budget to allow us to move forward with ordinary placement fire engine to meet community needs while also advancing the fire EMS facility that was presented to you about a week or so ago. In the same year, the Zebulon Police Department established the Community Advocacy and Resource Enhancement Care Unit to actually provide resources to our residents in need. The police department also created a support group to provide assistance to our officers navigating the difficulties of their work environment. We all know that mental health is real, and it's very important that our officers, indeed all our staff, take part of such a support group. In addition to this, the police department is not on the screen there, but they received an ABC grant of about 7,500, which actually provided special assistance to our officers' mental health. With regards to infrastructure, and I'm speaking here about our information technology department and our public works. This fiscal year, a new Department of Information Technology was created to handle the growing needs of our municipality. We hired Director Hester Wood in August of 2024, and one of our first goals, frankly, was to consolidate the software accounts we had throughout to be able to save us some money and to also upgrade technological devices. Further, we upgraded network connectivity at the firehouse and maintenance shop to ensure more reliable access to critical systems and communications. We also installed fiber optic internet at the public works facility to enhance speed, stability, and overall network performance. The Public Works Department staff worked with all town departments in creating a list of short-term and long-term projects that we can actually track. Fully one of the things that we're going to do next is probably create a dashboard where we can actually track this along with our residents. The department also created a capital investment program, a CIP, based on town-wide department input that needs to be considered at some point as our budgets move forward. I like to think of our Parks and Recreation Department as really the department that, and I'll use this language, I don't know this word, I don't know if it occurs in the English language or not, but to amenitize our town. So I kind of look at Parks and Recreation as the group that really leads that amenitization. We've been able to move forward with designs for Little River Park, submitting project for permits, the project for permit. We also updated our maintenance standards. All of these are definitely part of the master plan that was adopted also by the board a while back. With regards to economic development and planning, you've heard me said over and over again that our town is growing. Not just growing in terms of residents, but we're also attracting new businesses, as you could see on the screen, approximately, creating approximately about 185 jobs. I am more particularly encouraged by the inaugural launch business, frankly, that was a startup to help graduate 13 local entrepreneurs, and that's very important. Recently, our Main Street program moved from being an affiliate to being accredited, and our housing study, RFQ, or procurement process, actually started just about a week or so ago. And then you've approved some major development opportunities that could really alter the development landscape of Zebulon for decades to come. So again, thank you for your leadership in doing that. As far as I'm concerned, I believe that our staffing, accomplishment with staffing, the people that we hire and retain and recruit and retain to do this is very important. When I was here last time in June, there was a significant pay increase for our employees, the largest, or I should say the most significant in 25 years or more. 10% pay increase for public safety and public works employees and 3% pay for all increases, or pay increase for all our employees. Our staff continues to really work very hard to step into our sister department. So we see, for example, you came in tonight and you saw that the person who was actually leading the open house was Sheila Long, who is really our Parks and Recreation Director, that's really stepping in to support our budget. And I see that all the time with our department's leadership working together. Again, as I said, we created an information technology department, and we pulled out economic development out from Plany to be a standalone department. Human Resources hosted our first Wellness and Safety Day, and we also sponsored our first UNC School of Government lead for North Carolina's fellow students. We're proud of our accomplishments, absolutely proud of our accomplishments, but there's more work to be done, and I believe this is where the next budget comes in. You're going to see a couple of recurring themes in the list of challenges around growth, service demands, and staff capacity. And once again, I'll go back to the same bucket of public safety, infrastructure, economic development, and so forth. In public safety, increased call volumes, increased travel time, which obviously continue to strain our resources and our capacity. While we're happy that our town is growing, growth has its challenges, and this is what you see when our fire and police equipment and staff are not able to get to where they need to get to on time or respond to callers quickly. Post-budget should be addressing that, not just for this coming fiscal year, but even future fiscal years. And for public works, increased service demand. And we know that of the failed transportation bond referendum was definitely a setback, because traffic does not stop at the boundary, and it also doesn't slow down. It just keeps moving. And people come here and they complain about traffic congestion. My response to everyone is that you are the traffic. Because when people come here and they have more than one vehicle, it creates that. So that failed referendum was definitely a setback for us, because roadways will continue to need to be improved. We continue to have connectivity issues at town facilities. Take for example, during the town hall, where access to reliable internet service makes it very difficult for us to live stream some of our events. And as a growing community, we continue to have constraints on funding and resources that hinder our ability to upgrade critical infrastructure component. One budget is not going to solve this, but we're going to, starting with this budget, continue to make a dent in that area. With regards to amenities with Parks and Recreation, you know, they're often, I also think about Parks and Recreation and facilities as our best opportunities to connect with residents of varying ages and demographics. While we have done that successfully this year, we continue to face the inability to match the growing needs and additional requests, match them with our staffing levels. We hosted two large-scale holiday events back to back. That was great. Turnout was impressive, but it definitely put a strain on staffing resources, not just Parks and Rec staff, but pretty much town staff. And so we're forcing to reprioritize what we fund and what we support. We have limited number of fields, as you know, and facilities, so access is restricted. But we do have an opportunity, and that is we have a land acquisition study that will start to identify opportunities so we can add more fields and facilities so residents can continue to have access. With regards to economic development and planning, growth, again, is impacting how we do things. Growth is not necessarily bad if it's done smartly, but it is impacting us tremendously. If we do nothing today, our planning director pretty much advised me that we estimate our population to rise above 20,000 by 2030, as only five years away. That's if we do nothing. I actually think we will accomplish that before five years. I've been a planner all my career. I haven't seen that happen anywhere. And so I can just say, get ready. And if we do nothing, that's really what's going to happen. We'll continue to be attractive to new and large-scale economic opportunities. Laying the groundwork to make us competitive is critical, as we need the utility infrastructure to support such scale of opportunities. to support such scale of opportunities. A lot of big businesses want to move here, and one of their first questions is, do you have water? Do you have sewer? And so we have to be thinking about some of this as we welcome those challenges. The challenges with staff is one that doesn't stop just with this budget, but I think we're making a big leap with what we're going to recommend to you tonight. We continue to have challenges with attracting and retaining qualified candidates in a competitive job market, because compensation has to be competitive in order to keep our employees. Investment in employee training and development is very important. There are organizations who are often tempted to say, hey, listen, if we train and develop our employees, they will leave. I always respond and say, what if we don't train them and they stay? And if they stay without training, then they offer poor quality of services to our residents. So as a manager, I'm not concerned about investing money in training our employees. I believe that we should be concerned about not training them, not developing them, but then they stay. So it's very important that we consider that as part of our work, staffing challenges, but also the fact that when you have few people carrying a high workload, you're likely going to have a lot of breakdowns, and we want to make sure that that is not the case with us. So now, understanding what we achieved in twenty-four, twenty-five, and where the gaps are, I want to spend the next few slides talking about your priorities as a board and community feedback. Back in twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, during the budget process, the Den Zebulon Board of Commissioners adopted the twenty-thirty Strategy Plan, and the plan has three focus areas: making sure that our downtown is vibrant, making sure that we're growing smart, and creating that charming small-town life. This document has been the guiding policy for our town for the past six years, and it has shaped our priorities as a town. These policies are often the drivers behind the projects that we bring to you and that we manage. However, this document is now about six years old. While I believe that it will continue to be the north star for Zebulon, I also propose with this budget that we begin the process to update the twenty-thirty Strategy Plan going forward, in order for us to maintain its relevance, but also to continue to keep it in front of us. A lot of what we're going to be talking about in terms of policies and your priorities were pulled out of this document because, as I said today, is still a relevant policy And then for survey responses, between April twenty-eighth and May fifth, we conducted an online survey to kind of have an understanding of the aspirations and opinions of our residents with regards to our budget. As I said earlier, we reached four-thousand-four-hundred residents, and we gathered about eighty-two or eighty-three-hundred responses. We asked one major question of people who live in Zebulon: What topics do you feel should be considered during the development of the FY twenty-six Town of Zebulon Budget? And we got a lot of responses. We will post the result of the survey this evening online, so the residents can see that, but I want to spend the next few slides giving you the snapshot of the feedback that we received. As you listen to this over the next few slides, it may be good to note how some of those responses actually align with the twenty-thirty Strategy Plan and also some of what we've heard from you over the last several months. So those responses were grouped into several different areas: public safety, economic stability and growth, transportation and infrastructure, parks and recreation, vibrant and accessible downtown, environmental sustainability, and cultural arts. While eighty-eight percent of respondents said public safety was most important to them, eighteen percent said cultural arts is most important to them. Please note that that does not mean that cultural arts is not a worthwhile effort. What it means is that if I have ten dollars, I prioritize must-have versus want. And so everything that you see there is what your residents desire to have. But there are some of them that are probably more important today. That does not mean that that will not change over the next few months as new people move into our community. So I don't want us to perceive that there is any less-than response here, as much as they are all important to the residents who responded. So, for public safety, I'm not going to go through the bubbles, the city percentages. There again, we're going to post, have this on our website, and we're going to push it on social media as well. I'm just going to kind of talk about a couple of those feedback. For example, the second feedback there says, making sure that public safety services do not have to play catch-up with the town's growth. Strained emergency services result in standard care. The citizens and visitors deserve the best twenty-four-seven. And to achieve that is going to take some investment on our part. Economic stability and growth. Again, I read our second bullet point. We need to fix whatever the issue is that is preventing new businesses to come to Zebulon. We need new restaurants and retails to keep our residents from giving their money to all the other nearby towns. I like to tell stories, as I said earlier. So today I was a food lion to get my famous banana for my lunch. While I was in there, a gentleman approached me, a young gentleman approached me and said, are you the town manager? I said, yes, I am the interim town manager. And he said, well, my wife would like to meet you. All right? So introduced me to his wife, and came to find out that they just moved here from Morrisville because they were looking for a place where they could raise their family, where they could also be able to buy housing affordably. And I spent thirty minutes talking to them. They wanted to know about the future of Zebulon. They wanted to know, why don't we have restaurants? We live downtown, we want to have more restaurants, more retail. I'm sure that for all of you, you hear this all the time. So this respondent is not an outlier, is something that we hear. And I said to them, well, if you go back to a couple weeks now where we've had projects that have been adopted by the board, you will see that we're making progress in terms of the type of projects we want to see in our town: mixed-use development, leave-work units, leave-above-half restaurants or retail ground floor. And I know that your Economic Development Director is making all the push they can to get these types of development into Zebulon. Transportation and infrastructure. Again, see that quote there, transportation needs to be prioritized. Traffic volume on Piruses Road, Shepherd School Road, intersection of Gannon and Arendelle, and the Walmart intersection all need attention. Piruses and Ninety-seven need to be roundabout and wholly reconfigured. Bear in mind that these are not experts who are responding to this, but your residents who, you know, want to be able to seamlessly and effortlessly move through their town. For Parks and Recreation, it's about quality of life. So that second quote there says, focus on quality of life improvements such as parks, walkable neighborhoods, public spaces, and environmental protection. Not only boost local pride and cohesion, but also create lasting value that won't disappear if a larger employer relocates. A vibrant and accessible downtown, which, again, aligns with your strategic plan twenty-thirty. If you look at that last quote there, it says, stronger incentives to bring new businesses to Zebulon as a whole and particularly downtown. Increase matching grand dollars for downtown building improvements, both exterior and interior, to more impactful amounts. Create more downtown outdoor gathering spaces and parking. With regards to environmental sustainability, again, talking about Parks and Recreation, adding more Parks and Rec space to compete with other county community green space initiatives. And lastly, for cultural arts, it is important that we give our young children and teens programs and opportunities in our own town to nourish their mind and set them up for success in the future. Opportunities to keep them busy, like the COP events or sports or family events, so they are not wandering on the streets after school with no purpose. Again, I know Commissioner Miles has talked to me specifically about this type of thing over and over, and I think that what you're hearing from your residents, again, while eighteen percent must have responded to cultural arts, that does not mean it is of less importance when you think about, you know, the type of town that we are building. So now, we move on to the next fiscal year, starting with the theme and drivers. This theme focuses on growth and how we can move forward together in a growing community, a growing smart, and thriving together. So this is our theme for FY twenty-five, twenty-six, moving forward together, supporting our staff, and investing in our town's growth. Ours are dedicated and innovative. Our goal is to become an employer of choice that can retain who we are while we attract those who choose us. The drivers behind this twenty-five, twenty-six budget are public safety, then, infrastructure, amenities, what we do with some of our long-range plans, creating incentives and opportunities to attract businesses, and definitely investing in our staff. So, I will go over each one of these requests, staffing with staff, starting with staff requests with the next few slides for your consideration. With staff, I broke them into different categories. For police, we're requesting two patrol officers and one social worker. Notice that I italicize those because those are really the three new positions in the budget. The others are either we're converting six existing positions or repurposing them, and then we have also an opportunity in information technology to bring on either a high school or college student as an intern. That's how we paid forward. So for administration, we're converting the assistant town manager position to assistant to the town manager. This person will help with some special events that we have, but will also help with some special projects that do not belong in any particular department. When you also have town halls you want to organize, this person will help to work with you, to actually help understand exactly what your goals are with town hall and how they can assist you as a board to do that. If there are certain requests from your constituents that do not fall in a particular department, the assistant to the manager can actually work with each one of you to make sure that your constituents are responded to in a timely manner. That reduces the strain on the town club, but it also reduces the strain on our Parks and Rec Department when you have someone who can actually look at this overall townwide. We're also talking about converting the Communications Director to a Communications Manager position. And then to have a part-time human resources administrative assistant, because as the number of employees grow, as the town grows, you also want to make sure that we support our HR staff. Right now, with the incoming HR Director, we have two full-time staff in HR, but we don't actually have someone who could help them administratively to do some of the work that they need to do. For public works, there's an existing part-time administrative assistant, they would like to convert to full-time. For Parks and Rec, we talked about one maintenance technician that we're going to field, that position is currently there, we want to field that, and then repurpose one recreation assistant to one athletic supervisor. With regards to employee compensation, we want to move our employees to a place where we're competitive with other municipalities nearby. Couple weeks ago, we had our consultant, David Hill, present to you findings from our compensation study. That time, he provided three options in front of you, and I have those three options again today. For this recommended budget, we're looking at moving the pay scale for all our employees into a new pay grade that will make us more competitive. This way, you don't have to revisit this in another year or two, because if you move it option one, as a part of our recommended budget, you are able to take care of ninety-five percent of our employees. The remaining five percent have their scale that's already in the place it's supposed to be. With regards to that hundred percent, I will clarify again that that's not just moving everybody, but also has a cost-of-living adjustment with that. So while it may sound a percent, it really does not touch every employee as much as the one-point-one-million will do over the next couple of years. Our capital needs, compared to the current fiscal year, our capital needs, while they are important, they are not significant this year. We're not asking for major, you know, capital requests this year. We're focusing on transportation in terms of improving our road. Again, remember that we did not pass the referendum, so we're having to make do with what we have in-house. Parks and Recreation, land acquisition, Little River Phase One, and vehicles will cost about one-point-nine. Facilities and equipment, I like to identify the fact, speak to the fact that the project actually costs eighteen million dollars, but that five-point-nine is the town portion of the budget. The rest is coming from federal government and USDA, state and USDA. So the five-point-nine is really the portion that we're asking for that will help us to be able to build our fire station. And then two additional police vehicles, because we're asking for two police officers. These are the capital needs, and they're roughly about ten-point-five million in total. Our tax rate will not change. We're going to keep to the same tax rate that we have in the current fiscal year, and we are anticipating that we generate about fifteen-point-thirty-two million dollars for us. So again, I want to reemphasize, this budget that is being recommended and proposed to you does not include a tax rate increase, and that's very important. Our fund balance, I started by saying that you are one of the most fiscally conservative boards that I've had the pleasure of working with, that's a good thing. I want to also, right, however, that one of the reasons you've been able to achieve that is because your fund balance is just healthy, and that's just, you know, when you look at that chart over there, it takes you to where you were roughly five years ago in twenty-twenty, by eighty-nine percent. But always remember, though, that that means eighty-nine percent of our operating revenues. So the fund balance is really, has been kept in a very good, good place. That's a sound accomplishment, because a healthy fund balance is also positive for your bond ratings as a town, and that's always a good thing. Keep in mind that the policy that we have is the unassigned, our fund balance should be at least thirty percent of budgeted expenditure, even though the state only requires eight percent. So what we're talking about here, you're still above that thirty percent, and you're doing very well. So while, again, this is manager's recommendation, it's really a team-driven effort that we have in front of you today. So I present to you our recommended budget. You know, with this budget, we have a great opportunity to be a town that is economically competitive, that is driven by the desire to deliver services to our community in an equitable manner, that strengthens our resolve to be an employer of choice, and enhance our capability to meet our present and future challenges. The total general fund budget for FY twenty-five, twenty-six is twenty-eight-point-eight million, which is a decrease of about twenty-four percent over the prior year. Again, remember that I said this is a priority-focused budget. A decrease of twenty-four percent over a prior year does not mean a decrease of twenty-four percent in quality of services that our residents continue to expect of us to deliver. So while we may be decreasing, you know, twenty-four percent from current fiscal year, our residents will continue to get the services that are quality in an efficient and effective manner that they've come to expect. And where we lack, if we hear from them, we will pick up and make sure that we respond to that. The general fund provides funding for majority of our programs and services, and is primarily supported through receipts from our property and sales tax. So this recommended budget includes twenty-two-point-six million dollars for operations, again, a twenty percent decrease. We're trying to make do with what we have today. Five-point-six million for capital, which is a seventy percent annual decrease, and about five-hundred-and-forty-some thousand for, five-point-six million for debt service, which is about two-point-seven percent annual decrease. So again, compared to FY twenty-four, twenty-five, we decrease by twenty-four percent without decreasing the value of services that our residents expect of us. To accomplish our priorities, we are adopting a very conservative approach to our revenue outlook in FY twenty-five, twenty-six budget. At a continuing rate of fifty-seven-point-five cents, we expect a slight uptick. we expect a slight uptick in our property tax collection, but we've been asked by the state to also take a conservative approach to our sales tax expectation. And so that's why we have that number compared to what you have in the current fiscal year. But we believe that as we grow, we may actually surprise ourselves when we come to you mid-year to report where we are with our collections. And we have a near equal fund balance to what we currently have. Finally, this recommended budget reflects our strategic goals. It responds to our community feedback and is driven by our growth. As you can see, this is a balanced budget. A balanced budget is more than ensuring that how we spend is within what we bring in. So we're not spending more than what we bring in, and this is a balanced budget. A balanced budget also weighs the multiple policies and choices that together must synergize to achieve our vision as a vibrant, growing community that maintains our charm as a small town and our heritage. As I said earlier, our employees are dedicated and innovative. And together with you, our mayor and commissioners, we will make Zebulon competitive, livable, equitable, and sustainable for all our residents. Thank you. So if there's any immediate feedback, I definitely will want to address them before I sit down. But otherwise, you now have the FY2526 budget in front of you to consider over the next couple of weeks. You all have circles of constituents who look up to you. It's important to engage them in this process. It's also important for you to use the power of your social media to get the word out about the public hearing on June 2nd and your retreat on June 7, which will take place in this very room. We'd like to hear further again from our community, what they think about what we are presenting to you. And we will definitely be discussing any suggested modifications and adjustments during your June 7 retreat. Thank you, and I will take any questions if there are before I sit down.
Any questions, comments from the board? Commissioner Baxter?
With the 8,300 responses, not that I question the results.
Yes.
How were, how did we verify that they were residents that were responding?
That's very important. We were able to use zip code. So there were key questions that we asked in terms of where do you live that helped us to be able to know that the people who responded are actually residents of Zebulon. Now, we did have a couple responses that said, "If you don't live in Zebulon, but you do business in Zebulon, you should be considered as a resident." But that's not necessarily true because a resident receives the services that you provide every single day: pick up trash, provide water, and all of that. But it is true to the degree that people who work here, who don't live here, should also be able to benefit from some of the services that we provide, such as improvements to our road network, because people drive here. But we, I mean, we understand that sentiment, but those who responded to the survey are Zebulon residents and were able to verify using the zip code.
It's really amazing to have such a large response.
Yeah.
So, well done, and I'd just like to say thank you to everyone that worked so very hard in such short order to put together a budget that is not only meaningful and fiscally responsible, but is able to reflect what our community is looking for. So thank you to staff and thank you interim manager for all of the comprehensive work that's been done to put this together.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Questions, comments from the board?
I would also like to thank the staff for, for all their hard work going into this budget in such a short term, short time. Very, very well presented and looks like something that we can move forward on.
All right, thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ty.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff.
If there's no further questions or comments from the board?
I have one more question slash comment, and that is, where can we direct the community to, to find the budget? Normally, we have one at the library, we put a copy at Eastwick High School, and online, are there any other ways for? Oh, yeah, the chamber gets a copy. Where else can folks find the budget, should they want to take a look at it?
The director of Feds to come and respond to that, but all of those locations, and if we have anyone else who wants to request copies for their meetings or something like that.
And there's a copy that's going to be here as well, yeah.
Correct, yeah, all those that you just named and the website will be, that will be delivered to and posted on the website, so that's the plan. If there's any others. How soon? Tomorrow.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you so very much.
Any other comments from the board, questions? To adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, meeting adjourned.